On to H local, H six Local Control Accountability Report, LCAP.
Yes, so this item here, we have Mark Bonet, our CBO, who's going to lead this discussion related to the development of our LCAP plan, review the timeline, and have a general discussion. In addition to that, what we have, I also, Ms. Allen, we're going to engage in actually combining and integrating the LCAP plan with teaching and learning, obviously, which is what it's supposed to be and do. And the goal this time is to just really make sure that we're soliciting input, not just on, not on LCAP per se, but also on our BAC. So, we're going to use our budget advisory process and combine all of those together this year, along with some of the other pieces of data that we need to gather from the community and around teaching and learning. And so, we've got Mr. Bonet here, CBO, to give a brief overview of that information, and also Ms. Allen to answer any questions as well related to aligning the key areas. Mr. Bonet.
What we've done is integrate the budget calendar and integrated the LCAP calendar with that. So, and I'll go through the months. November, it's establishing a budget advisory committee and sending out notices to parents with regard to LCAP. December, we're going to meet with school site staff and go over what the LCAP is with our teachers and our school staff, similar, similarly to what we did with the school board at the study session. And then recruit parents during the month of December for the LCAP. And that sounds like some of that work has already been done. January, it's going to the governor's budget workshop, find out how much money we'll be getting, meeting with the parent advisory groups, holding community meetings. The state Board of Education has to adopt the regulations with regard to the use of the supplemental and concentration grants. So, we expect that information by the end of January. In February, we'll meet with school site councils and ELAC for feedback and input. We'll start the enrollment projections, and some of that has already started. Staffing projections, the budget assumptions, we'll start hold, start holding community meetings. March, we'll get budget assumptions to the board, we'll start line item processes, incorporating the information that we've gotten from our community meetings. April, we will update the committees, review the budgets with the trustees, and then in May revise our tentative budget, incorporate the governor's May revisions into that budget. And then hopefully by June, we have it all together, the LCAP plan and the budget plan, and present that to the board for adoption before June 30th. Our plan, our LCAP plan will then go to the county office of education for approval, as will our budget. So, they'll both go to ACOE for, for review and approval. And the, the lateness of the LCAP plan goes to October 8th. Generally, the budget is approved or disapproved before that time. So, there's not a linking of timelines with regard to the LCAP and the budget adoption process, even though they are linked and they have to be linked. I don't know why the state had incorporated that date and not coincided it with the budget approval process.
It's my understanding that the LCAP has to be approved before the budget can be. The LCAP has to be approved before the adopted budget.
I think they could be approved at the same meeting. I don't, I don't believe that one has to be approved before the other. I haven't read that anywhere.
Yeah, the adopted budget can't be approved without the LCAP being approved. You're right, they can be approved on the same day. But the LCAP has to be, you know, either the same day or the LCAP has to be approved before. The adopted budget cannot be approved before the LCAP.
That's news to me, then.
That's my understanding, am I correct in that?
So, are you talking about by the district or by the county?
Um, by the district. I'll say by the district.
So, the district, it's basically, we adopt, we have to have a hearing on the LCAP at an, at a date prior to the meeting where we adopt the LCAP.
Right.
When we adopt the LCAP, which must be by June 30th.
Right.
We are essentially adopting the budget at the same time.
At the same time, right, right.
The county subsequently reviews and approves our LCAP and our budget, which again is going to be happening at the same time.
Right, okay, alright.
So, it's just the county has October 8th to, to, the LCAP part is clear?
I guess, yeah. I mean, I, I think they'll.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can, we can have an LCAP sooner, so that we can get county approval sooner?
This is going to be a laborious process, and it's relatively new, and all the regulations aren't out yet. So, it's like feeling ourselves around in the dark.
Well, this is, well, this is, I mean, this is what I'm hearing, is that districts, because we know the guidelines of what the LCAP should be, districts should go ahead and start planning the LCAP. And I think once the regulations come out from the state board or whatever they do, then if there needs to be adjustments through districts, that can be done. But the advice that I'm hearing from school services is that, you know, districts need to start this project and, and have them prepared for the adopted budget for 14, 15, which is in June.
So, which is what we're doing, so no problem there.
Right.
This is the question of whether or not the county, in their, you know, that language where they have to adopt it. What if they don't turn, you know, turn around to us until September?
We've done our.
That's, that's their deadline.
That's the only difference. It seems like we're tied to the same guidelines, so there's, we're, we're parallel track with the budget approval process from the board, so we're in the same place.
Yeah, Ms. Allen and I have already discussed identifying currently how we're spending money in those eight areas, and currently how we're addressing some of those areas of need. So, we are starting that process already, which will facilitate the 14, 15 budget adoption process.
So, I appreciate this. This is, I think, lays out a good, basic framework. I think there, that there's some more details that need to be folded into this, so.
Absolutely. And we do understand that. We just haven't pinned down certain dates to get some of this work done.
Yeah, so let me give you some dates, and let me give you some additional ideas on, on what I'd like to see in here. The, the state board is, is meeting in January where they will be adopting the regs. It's going to be probably mid, we know what the board meeting data, you know, it's like the 10th and the 11th, or it's set in stone already. That's, that's when we're going to know what the regs look like, not, even though the statute says the 31st, we're actually going to know. And it's, and even though the statute says they have till March 31st to adopt the template, the board is attempting to adopt the template at the same time in the January meeting. So, their current template version is, is pretty weak, and they've got a lot of work to do if they want to meet that deadline. But that is their announced plan to try to actually in January do both, the expenditure regulations and the template. The, I think the, um, it, it, the piece missing from this, I'd say like the most substantive piece, is that the statute also requires us to set, identify what our school level goals are in the eight state priority areas. What are our school level specific actions to meet those goals? And what are our school level expenditures to deliver those specific actions? So, that is both to be happening at the district level, goals and specific actions and expenditures all tied up, and at the school level. So, I think there needs to be some processes built in to explain that in our, in our LCAP.
Yeah, as we go back and look at how we're meeting those eight areas, we'll, we'll do that by school level. We have to.
We, it probably will be easier for us to do that, because we have, you know, one elementary K eight and one high school, so that, that is probably true. I just want us to be paying attention to make sure we're, we are making that distinction. We're not, we don't just have like a, we have a district goal to, you know, do X, and we're spending, this is what we're going to do to do X, and you're not clear, what are we doing at the high school, what are we doing at the NEAs? Where are we spending the money to do that, which school? So, I think we, we need to make sure we're breaking that out.
Some of our problem may come along the lines of, say, a parent liaison that works for the districts and works for both schools, and how we divide that time up between both schools.
But you, you, you're able to do that.
I understand, yeah.
You're able to say, well, pro rata, they're, you know, roughly going to be 60, 40, or whatever it might be. Yeah. Ms. Allen, you wanted to respond to that specifically?
So, I just wanted to, I know you all had, Mr. Bonet came up and he talked about the eight areas, but I also wanted to talk a little bit more about the eight areas in terms of the goals. And I think in terms of what we're thinking in, in, when we look at the LCAP, so while there's specific language that we must adhere to, but I think overall, we still have to continue to think about what that looks like when moving to ECCL. So, if we're, if we're thinking about K-12, one of the requirements is that not only do we have to set the goals, but you have to actually be very, it's in the details is where you will actually see what will happen at each school. So, when you set, so even if we set a district goal, the district goal would, because you can set a goal, but it will look different at the high school than in, well, the elementary school. However, as we think about our marketing plan or recruitment, what we've also noticed is that we have to start thinking K-12. And so, so it's a both and. So, it's both, what is the district goal, what does it look like school site, but also how does it actually, how does it look, look as a continuum, and how do they both align? So, it's, so when we want to maintain our students from one school to the next, then we're thinking about it as, what does it look like K-12? Because that's what we have to start advertising and promoting to our parents. And so, I just want us to be mindful of that as well, in addition to what you stated.
Yeah, that's, so, as long as we're saying, okay, these are the specific actions we're taking to meet those goals.
Yeah, so.
And they're going to look different, K three than.
And they may look different K through three versus, you know, or K five versus 6 eight. So, so the more specific we are, I think, the more that we'll be able to identify if we really can implement that, and do we have the funding to do so. So, therefore, the package comes comprehensive versus what we contend, what we often receive are piecemeal information of what one person may want, or what one person thinks, and always be mindful, when a person comes to the microphone and they think about what their, their specific state, they represent a stakeholder group. And whether it's a parent, or whether it's a teacher, whether it's a student, they represent a stakeholder group. And hopefully, in our attempts, we begin to help people understand what does it look like K-12. Because while I'm a stakeholder group right now for my third grader, my third grader will eventually be an 11th grader. And so, if I'm not thinking that far ahead, then we're, we're being short sighted, and we're using funding for a one-time shot deal versus how does it look like when we sustain this program, or we sustain this service for our students? So, so I, so it's also both and. So, what, so there's, you know, as you all know, there's eight areas that we have to address, which is, one is student achievement, and I think they still need to change the language, because it, it addresses CSTs while there's another category that talks about implementing Common Core standards. But student achievement is one, and then one part that is really in particular, particularly, what are we doing to, you know, get students college and career ready? And so, that's K-12, and again, particularly what we're doing with K, with 912, and what those partnerships with Berkeley City College look like, our parrot system. So, this gives us an opportunity to actually address a different type of model for our children based on that we're a tiny school district, based on that we have limited staff. But it gives us more of an opportunity to think broadly and not necessarily very narrow. Second area is student engagement. So, currently, the language talks about student engagement in terms of school attendance, dropout, graduation rates. The fortunate part of being in a tiny district is we probably can, we can pull reports that will identify two or three students, so we can identify our students versus not a mass of students. So, it also gives us an opportunity to redefine what student engagement is. And so, some of our attempts in terms of having, having student voice, where, you know, students are representatives, where we have the leadership class, where we have student-led activities versus the adult activities, such as this, you know, in terms of tearing down our school, or student-led activities in terms of what the LCAP will be, a lot of those forums will actually be student-led. So, how do we actually have students engaged community-wise, and also engaged in the classroom? So, it gives us more opportunity to talk about student engagement versus just if they're absent, or if they're, you know, dropouts. Because we have, the few that we do have, we usually have a plan for them, but how do we be more proactive versus always being reactive in student engagement? The third area is other student outcomes, which will address a lot of the outcomes that are on the scorecard. So, it gives us an opportunity to address performance and tell the story, such as remember Simon was talking about earlier, but how do we actually, what indicators do we want to use to tell the story? So, as we have conversations with our constituents and stakeholders, it's imperative that we help them shift their thinking in terms of talking about a story and creating that story versus the mentality of, there's a pot of money, and I'm here to just get what I need from my constituent group. But how do we actually start to collectively think, what do we need for everyone, and what gives us the most leverage, so everyone can actually, so our students can have or reach equitable outcomes? The next category is student climate. Student climate addresses suspension and expulsion rates, but our focus will be on other local measures. So, in terms of, we have, we are fortunate to have a wellness department, and we have individuals who go above and beyond and work over 100% to actually make sure that that department works and, and students receive wraparound services. So, in this, how do we define school climate? What is our story about school climate? So, it's not a deficit model in terms of suspensions and expulsion, but when a child comes into this district, what can we guarantee parents? That, what kind of climate will your child experience, and what will you experience as a family? So, another, so several of these areas can provide us an opportunity to think about the vision that you all placed, or in terms of ECCL versus just the typical language that the state has provided for us. And the fifth area, parent involvement, so you know, that's been a conversation that we've talked about. Hopefully, we'll adopt, you know, a framework. But it also addresses, how do we seek parent input, which I think is very important for parents to know, in terms of how do we actually address, how do we recruit, now, I don't want to say recruit parents, but how do we involve parents and welcome parents in terms of the conversations that we have? And also, what are, what's our promotion of parent involvement, which I will, I always go back to the framework. When we have a framework and we can identify where parents can become involved, they have a menu of options versus just the picture that they, they have in their head of what they think it should look like, or the bad experiences that they've had as a child, you know, in terms of a school system. So, we want, again, to make sure that parents are welcome in, in our schools. The next area are basic services. So, it, so it addresses teacher misassignments, it addresses standard-aligned instructional materials and facilities and good repair. So, some of the information that we address with our Williams, you know, law, do us, do we have adequate facilities, do we have, you know, textbooks for all students? But it also, again, creates an opportunity of, how do we support our staff, and how do we support our teachers? You know, we don't have healthy teachers, then we, then we don't have healthy students. So, it gives another opportunity or bucket versus, all, the focus is always, who's misassigned? Who doesn't have the right credential? Who doesn't have this? Versus, what are we doing to make sure our teachers want to stay in this district and to go above and beyond 100% versus, they come to work at 8:00 and they leave at 3:00, that stayed in their contract? And how do we celebrate what they do? How do we support what they do? And how do we encourage their innovation in terms of being able to take risk? And I, and I feel like they're being evaluated all the time. So, again, this, the, the category gives us an opportunity to talk about it proactively versus the language that the state gives us. The next one is the implementation of Common Core state standards, so we talked a little bit about that, and it also includes EL. So, as Ms. Miller stated, we, our goal is to talk about our students inclusively, include our special ed students, while we need to identify the equitable outcome. So, students learn in different matters, they learn differently, but what are we implementing, implementing so they can access the curriculum? And that should be a conversation that we talk about all of our learners. Otherwise, again, sometimes you get into your pigeonhole in terms of, here's a pot of money, and we're all grabbing for the same pot of money, and we're only representing a certain group versus how do we represent all of our children? And then the last area are the course access. So, just making sure the students have access to courses that are meaningful, A through G, or courses that will prepare them college, you know, for college and career. So, we have to have specific actions, we have to use the LCAP template, as you all know, that won't be available until March. And then, we must solicit input from our stakeholders in developing a plan. And so, just briefly to talk about one of the areas, the town hall meetings. So, we'll work with Youth Together, and you all, so we have a young lady by the name of Celeste, who helps run our leadership programs with Ms. Collins in terms of ASB. And the goal is to actually have them lead some of the, the meetings and have focus groups, so we actually can have affinity groups. So, there, you do have stakeholder groups that talk about specifically in terms of what it means for students in terms of language, in terms of students of race, in terms of student social economics. So, you have focus groups, but then you also have the conversation of, when we get together, what is that, if we see all, this is what students need, then what gives us the most leverage so that all of our students can, can be successful and college-ready? And then, I think that's, that's primarily mostly in. And so, I know that this is a draft, and what we want to bring back is a final draft, and actually a flow chart in terms of what those specific conversations will look like. So, hopefully, that wasn't too much.
Yeah, that's great, that was great. So, Eric, a reminder too, that the, I requested in the governor's office, was willing to listen to me, that there's also the option of adding local priorities in addition to the eight states. So, we're not limited to only the eight they gave us. We can, if we think music is a, and arts is a high priority, or STEM, or some other articulation, we are free to build that into our LCAP. On the community meetings in particular, I'm glad you brought that up, because the, the plan proposes, in a draft sense, a community meeting somewhere between January 27th and the 31st, and then another community meeting in February, the end of February, 24 to 28. Again, I guess I have a number of questions around that. Are we, it seems that we need both school-level community meetings and district community meetings, and that maybe we should start with the school and later on move to a district level. But particularly if we are hewing to the notion that we're, we're going to have school-level goals, actions, and expenditures, then we ought to be, you know, talking to the ELAC and the SSCs and the PTOs and the staff at that school site, and building up what our LCAP is by starting with a, some school-level community meeting.
So, so hopefully, I'm not sure, but I hopefully it was articulated when we, when we created the timeline. So, the town hall meetings are a little different when we receive feedback from the established groups. So, not only would we receive feedback from your, from the ELAC, the school site councils, the PTOs, that's one set of, set. The town hall meetings are, are specifically for entire groups, and then they'll sit in their specific groups. So, if they represent a group that is the elementary, or they represent a specific, so they represent specific stakeholder groups. In terms of having, and so, you want to make sure that you have stakeholders from, from all of your categories.
So, you're proposing the, a universal town hall meeting in which people will talk, at some part of the room will be divided, and the NEAs folks go there, and the ESS.
Or stakeholders. So, you may have, because even at NEA, you have stakeholders, you have specific groups. So, the intent of the town hall meetings, which Youth Together have conducted in Burke, they, they conducted San Francisco Unified and West Contra Costa Unified, the intent for those particular meetings are to actually have focus groups. And so, if your focus groups represent a parents at NEAs, or they represent teachers at NEAs, then those groups will be there, and then everyone can see their information to get, I mean, all together, K-12, or as a community. The specific staff meetings or, or ELAC meetings, we will attend those as well, but we will also go to the established meetings or the structured meetings where our stakeholders already have established ones. So, staff meetings, ELAC, school site council, PTOs. So, the goal is to actually address as many people and give them more opportunities to engage, because they're all, they all won't come to necessarily a town hall meeting. Maybe that's the only one they can come to. They all aren't necessarily sitting, you know, all teachers won't be able to go to that, but they'll be able to participate at a staff meeting, because we know that they're all there on Thursdays or Wednesdays. So, it's a variety of both and.
So, I think you have my point, and I, you know, I think as long as we are paying attention to both the, as I've said several times tonight, the school level and, and the district level goals and actions, I think that, that can work, what you're proposing. The other thing about the, the community town halls is, I mean, I did appreciate the, the budget timeline sensitivity that this, and interaction that the draft plan has. I think we need to think about that in terms of the town halls too, because we can meet in January, in February, based on the January budget, but then we have a May revise that can really change things, maybe in a negative direction, maybe in a positive direction. And it seems like there, there needs to be some, another town hall where we say, alright, now these are the real May revise numbers, now we know what we're most likely to get, how has that changed our, our tentative LCAP, and, and, you know, how does it, now we have that extra money for that music teacher, or whatever it is. We ought to, we ought to be able to, I think, build that into the process.
That's a part of the, that's a difficulty that districts have had for a really long time, yeah. Absolutely. And it's, and it's conveying that information now just to a larger crowd. We've always conveyed that information to budget advisory committees, school sites, school boards. It's, that audience just gets bigger as we do the same work. That, that's all it means.
But, well, I mean, I guess now that we have this new LCAP community engagement process, I think we need to have a formal LCAP community engagement meeting after the May revise to involve, because we're going to modify the LCAP.
You're absolutely right, right.
And that, along those lines, that this draft has us adopting on March 31st an LCAP, which seemed, adopt, SPE, that's template.
That's state board.
Yeah.
So, you're saying that's in January? You're saying that's now in January 11th, 12th?
Yes, I am saying that's, that's probably.
So, it's not March?
No, tentative budget to board of trustees, I'm sure the first, complete, complete line item budget.
He said that the template may be adopted at the same time as the regs from this, in January, so that may change.
Okay, so maybe.
We may get that information at the governor's budget workshop.
Yeah, and the sooner we get that, the better we're able to implement the plan.
So, do we have a, I guess that, there needs to be a little more tightness between what the statute requires in terms of a, an LCAP kind of proposed, a hearing on the LCAP, and then final adoption? So, I, I just want to see those dates built in. And we, you know, what is, what is the date in June or late May where we are saying, okay, the May revise has come out, we've taken your input on that now, we know what our numbers are, now we're having our, our hearing well enough in advance of, I mean, it's basically, we only have two, two meetings in June, so it's got to be like the first June board meeting where we say, here's our LCAP. Because it can't be the same board meeting that we adopt the budget and the final LCAP. We have to have a hearing, the June, the meeting before that.
I do see in May, the end of May, that we have public notice of budget adoption. So, is it, would it be envisioned that the LCAP would be similarly profiled at that meeting as well?
Well, the LCAP will have to have a public hearing, the first meeting in June, and then be adopted the second meeting in June. That's a really. That's a really tight timeline to make changes. I view this as a plan and goals that, around those eight areas, as Anna Coreta stated. And the budget is just tweaked between May and June with regard to the ups or downs of the budget. I think the plan still stays in place, the dollars just may change.
We need, you know, even under that framework then, we need to have a public hearing on the plan at some point in advance of June, both to have the public hearing requirement, but also we're required to get feedback from, or, you know, if they want to give it, from the D-LAC, from the school site councils, from the parent advisory committee that we form, and the superintendent is required to respond in writing to any comments that are received from those entities. So there needs to be the timeframe built in to respond in writing and maybe even to change our LCAP to say, good point.
So, okay, this is just a thought, and usually I don't do that at board meetings because I like to think about it thoroughly. However, you know how, I think if we give updates in terms of what people are thinking, it gives you information in advance. So you're not waiting until the last minute for someone to come out of the wood, I shouldn't say it, someone does car wheels inside the school board meeting or come out the woodworks and they bring a whole stakeholder group and they make a plea at a public meeting because then you're able to respond, not only do you anticipate what's coming up, you're able to start to assess, and you're able to actually think about it comprehensively. So by the time June comes, you shouldn't have a conversation anymore about, well, maybe we should consider this, again, with Mr. Miller, I mean, Mr. Miller, what Mr. Monet stated, was that you should only adjust, it shouldn't be the plan that you're adjusting, it's just the dollar amounts.
And you hit the nail on the head because that was going to be my, you know, question, suggestion, that prior to the hearing of the LCAP, that we have a study session with the board to allow us to see what the community input, you know, really is or really was. But with you saying the updates, if we can get either updates after each community meeting or, you know, each meeting, or get a study session after all the community meetings have been, you know, had, and then we can just look at, you know, all the final comments before we have the hearing, for me, that would be well. But to piggyback on member Adfeld regarding the timeline, I did not see where the superintendent in this timeline would respond to any of those concerns of those stakeholders. And if that's a part of the regulation or, you know, the law, then we need to put that in this timeline as well because we will have feedback from those stakeholder groups regarding the LCAP, I'm sure. We just had one today, where we just had a request today.
I think it's not in there because as we go through this process, we'll be making changes along the way. This isn't a hard and fast plan that's being drafted and pushed along.
I'm with you.
This thing is fluid, just like the budget's fluid, and we follow from, before January, we have a good idea what the governor's going to present in January. Then before the May revise, we have good idea what is going to be coming out in the May revise. Maybe not exactly, but we have a good understanding of what's coming out in May and then what the state will adopt in June. So we have a pretty good idea of what those numbers will be and it's a fluid process, as will the LCAP plan be a fluid process.
Well, I think the budget is a little bit more fluid than the plan because the plan has to really be vented out through the community process and, you know, and there may have to be some, what's the word I'm looking for from the superintendent, some response back from the superintendent. So that's not as fluid as the numbers that you're talking about, and I'm with you there. You know, my concern is not so much with the numbers, but it is more concerned with the plan and making sure we have that plan because then, like you said, I'm with you, Ms. Monet, the numbers can flow with the plan, but the numbers can't flow if we don't have a plan. And that's my concern just from a knowledge and update point, knowing what that plan looks like as it goes on, you know, as it goes through the process.
Or as it's being developed. So I think it's noted, I don't think, because I think there's two ways you can be strategic about it. So, and it would be up to Dr. Lindo in terms of how she wants to respond. So you can have a response where you have one meeting, she has to respond to everything that comes at the meeting, or you could respond as you go along. So what I think we should do as a staff is to go back in terms of legally what we have to do, and is there, is it the what, or do they identify also the how? If they only identify the what, then we should be strategic in terms of how we respond. So therefore, we're all clear that if she's going to respond, will it be from one meeting? And we state this at a public meeting? Or is she responding every time someone comes up and makes a comment after the update? And so really that should be, if it's not specified in terms of how, then it gives us more discretion in terms of what that looks like.
So we need to obviously, you know, look at the statute, but I believe that the structure does specify how, to the extent that it's anticipating the proposed LCAP that the board is planning, proposing to adopt, is presented at a public hearing that is not where it is adopted, but is in advance of that. And that at that, in response to that version of the LCAP, written comments, if received by certain entities, including the parent advisory committee and the D-LAC, must be responded to in writing by the superintendent.
And it's not, it's a great, a great point to note, to ensure that we note it on the timeline, that we publicly give to the community to let them know that there will be a response, a written response.
So, and one question, does it state that you have to have one public meeting, or how many public meetings can you have? You have to, it's minimum one, correct? So you can have as many public meetings? I mean, I'm just asking you all.
The minimum of a public hearing on the LCAP, but then there are other language and other pieces saying, the other piece is not so prescriptively, but you need to have engagement and engage stakeholders, parental involvement's a priority, blah, blah, blah.
Again, so I think definitely, we definitely know what the what is. I think there's still, there may be, may be some opportunity to describe and to address the how.
Right. And I would just add that I think, I think there is an opportunity to not just make it formulaic of, okay, here's our public hearing and here's our written, but combine that with the May revise timing to then see how that affects things, and then at that point, then we have, right, you know, as soon as we can after the May revise, have this public hearing and do the kind of written, but, you know, one more round of here's the public opportunity to have feedback based on what we know our final numbers are. And I would say, I, I'm not so sure that, I wouldn't say ahead of time the plan won't change with the May revise because I could anticipate that what might come out of this engagement process is, you know, we don't have enough money to do that, but hey, if we got a little bit more out of May revise, that would be the next thing we'd want to do. And then boom, the May revise, which it looks like it will this year, we may actually, you know, have, get more income than we're, you know, otherwise expecting, so.
Question for you, I just had two comments, questions. I think what worked really, it was very helpful that Mark you presented to the board last year were the priorities that were listed from that BAC committee. I think that was really valuable. So I'm just envisioning that it would be a similar list that may come, or maybe it's the same list that comes from the LCAP, the folks that are meeting and that. So we'll know what the priorities are as we go along, which I think is the point.
My expectation is that there'll be different priorities from these different constituent groups. So the parents may have a different list as opposed to the BAC, as opposed to the D-LAC, as opposed to the school site council. So I think there'll be several lists that we'll have to choose from.
And then I guess my other point is, it seems as if the districts and I'll say the board, you know, we have the annual process of divining what the goals will be of the district for the, you know, for the next year. We normally do that in a retreat format in the summertime. So does that accelerate, I mean, essentially accelerate our goal setting, right, for the prior year?
It will have to.
So, I mean, I think that, how do we inform, I mean, it's not, I don't even think it's really January, I mean, I think it's too early. It seems that we're kind of role reversed, not role reversed, but I think in terms of process reversed, that the constituencies, the different groups are going to be meeting and determining what their interests are, and the board is going to have to at some point synthesize or something.
May I suggest that maybe the January, the January retreat is the time when we sort of set the framework for what we're about to go into with the various community meetings? Because quite frankly, there are a thousand ways to do school. Ms. Allen has pointed this out on numerous occasions. We can go in an infinite number of directions, and it's our role as the board to say, this is the direction we're going in, so that as we get the input, we can then use that as the organizing principle for the input. In the past, over the past 10 years, we've said our direction is we are a science and arts school, that we're going to frame things in the science and the arts, and a college going school, and that's been consistent, you know, throughout. And I think it's important that, that local control doesn't mean free for all, it means how do we set a direction and weave all this together so that it doesn't become the place where we divide as a community into factions, the arts kids and the sports kids and, you know, instead, we set the direction in January, and then I would encourage us to even consider declaring a number of these meetings as board work sessions so we can be there as well, and we can, we as a board can speak with one voice that the point of these discussions is how do we make this an and discussion and not, you know, violins versus football? So we have to find a way to set, to this, yeah, that's my two cents.
Any other board comments on this particular one?
Well, I would just say, yeah, ultimately, it is the board that's going to decide, we could reject all the community input and say, we're going off in another direction. But, you know, obviously, yeah, I mean, I think we have set some directions, I think we certainly want to communicate that. And I'm curious to see what the community input is, as you said, like we saw in the BAC, and now we'll have a broader set of stakeholders. I think it's a great idea to, I was just assuming we could all go and participate if we need some formal noticing of a study session.
We can't as individuals go.
If more than two of us want to go, so I think that we just call them study sessions and then all five of them can go.
Whatever we need to do.
We did that, and we talked about that in the communications committee a while ago about having community board forums, so it definitely fits into that.
But I don't, I'm not anticipating that they are in any way formal or that we are sitting in front of a room or anything, that we're, that it's a community forum and we're simply participating. But the last point is, as the draft rightly notes, we have to appoint a parent advisory board. That is a new entity that we don't currently have, and so we need to get on that. We should have it in place by January before any of these meetings happen.
It states.
You've got the timeline here.
It states in December. Inform NEATs, ESS staff, school site councils, D-LAC regarding LCAP budget process, ask teachers, and I could ask also at those particular meetings for parent nominations. So I think when the teachers nominate certain parents, then we give them a private phone call and we state you have been nominated, you know, to participate in our parent advisory. A lot of parents, they'll see the, although we'll put the information out, but many of them have indicated a conversation, a phone call where you can actually have a conversation, ask questions, has been beneficial, and not necessarily in a public forum where they feel like that they're put on the spot to participate. So that's, so there are other ways, but that's one way that I know in terms of receiving feedback that may actually be beneficial, is to have teachers nominate. And it doesn't exclude that the parents can't nominate themselves or volunteer, as we sent on information, but in terms of nominations, it's nice to call and state you have been nominated, you know, to participate on this committee because of A, B, C, and D, and we would like to extend the invitation to you.
So I was going to ask a question based on that timeline. Could we move that piece, the T-shirts nominating parents, up to November?
Well, the reason we don't have, so in, at this time in November, Mark intends to speak with the budget advisory committee first. So therefore, you have some staff who understand what this process looks like and give some initial feedback. Then in December, he will attend their staff meetings. And so at the staff meetings is when he explains the information or explains the process is when we'll ask for parent nominations.
Is that staff meeting early in December? Because where I was kind of going with this, if we could do this in the first week of December, I mean, because teachers are going to be going on holidays, parents, you know, celebrating the holiday, the sooner we get to them in December, I think the better we'll be, you know, as far as getting some kind of response, whether it's yea or nay, versus waiting until.
Response from who, teachers?
From the parents, on the nomination.
Yeah, so a lot of, well, a lot of parents have cell phones, so you're actually going to contact them wherever they are. I mean.
I was just saying, they're earlier in December, the better.
Yeah, so the two dates, so the two dates, the latest that we can do NEATs is the 19th. And so the first week in December, we can do ESS, NEATs is the 19th because we've already scheduled Alameda County Office of Education to come on those Thursdays.
So, well, I mean, I guess I just added mine a more, somewhat more formal process than a teacher nominating someone and someone calling them up saying, congratulations.
Well, it's not congratulations, it's just we want to welcome you. Doesn't mean that you have to accept it, so.
But I, okay, I guess I envisioned nominees, names being put in front of this board and this board appointing, much like we kind of did the task force with the schools committee, and that this board may have ideas, the superintendent may have it, you may have ideas of parents that should be on, and we certainly should ask the teacher, and I think we should, in Wednesday packets, invite volunteers too and say, why do you think you should be on this? And maybe we will.
Yeah, so I stated, although I stated just teachers, but it's actually asking a variety of people. We could do a formal process in front of the board. I can only go by experience, and I also know how parents feel, how they'll accept on the spot, but they really don't want to do the work, and they say it afterwards. And I would want to, again, make sure that we welcome parents and not feel like that we're forcing them to be on anything. So I think it would be nice to have them be, to come to a board meeting, and we can definitely accept nominations from staff, all over, from the board members, but the personal phone call is what gets parents in the door.
I absolutely agree with you on that, that they, there should be some sussing out from potential candidates, that, do you know what this is? Do you know what the scope of work is here? Are you willing and interested in participating?
So I think a formal process comes when you have a lot of people who want to participate. But if we have 10 who's dedicated, then we take those 10.
Well, that, if I can just make, I'd like some thought into, do we want 10? 10 may be too big. Maybe we want 15. You know, we want to, we certainly want some English learner parents, we want ideally special ed parents, we want.
So the goal is to get a variety of stakeholders?
Right.
The question is, in terms of parent advisory, is it, when you state we want to, are, so the question will be in a flow chart, who works with the parent advisory group? So if it's a parent advisory group that is intended to come to a board meeting or is in a study session with the board members, then it makes sense. So I think that is a further discussion that we have to talk about actually the process because clearly, if we have a difference in what the process is and to get parents, then we need to flesh that out, and just to make sure that we're on the same page. and just to make sure that we're on the same page.
So as I, yeah, as I understand the parent advisory group, it's to advise the board on the LCAP. And what, you know, as representatives of the parent community, they think of the LCAP and what should be in there. And if they, there are things in there they don't like, then the superintendent has to respond in writing, et cetera. So.
So again, it goes back to, I think, we know the what. But what we have to actually align is the how. So we have differences.
So, yeah, in terms of the how, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking is, is, you know, this is our last, in November, we have one more in December. How can we, when should we? Well, I guess, A, do we want, in fact, the board to be formally, you know, accepting staff recommendations and appointing people? And then, and B, you know, how do we, all of us go out and, you know, recruit people and have those phone calls? And C, do we have a number in mind of how big we want this committee to be? Or we just want to see what, will we come back? And how balanced?
Is there a percentage that's in the statute at all?
Oh, no, no. Completely up to us.
I mean, I guess my, I guess my question would be, I think, you know, this is the first year. So I'm more inclined to at least, at least go with the, go the route or maybe offer the both, you know, both. It's a, you know, it's a call, any parents interested kind of, you know, statement from the board. But I think it is, that it holds high value to have, you know, staff know of parents who would be interested to participate to, you know, also do it. I mean, I think we have to do both and. And in both, yeah, anyway. And I think that's an approach I would like to see because I think, you know, we do ourselves a disservice if we only just, you know, kind of just raise it to the board, you know, like the parcel tax or a CLC. I think it's hard to do that. And at the end of the day, teachers are working more closely with parents than any of us sitting here on this diet. Even as a parent or as an auntie or a next door neighbor or whatever, I think you have to do both, I think. I think it's right. But in terms of the number, I don't think, I mean, I'd rather see us get flooded with 25 people. I mean, and, you know, if that's going to happen, I mean, I don't, I don't know what our experience has been. Well, I do know what our experience has been. So, I mean, with that.
You don't want to stress staff out with an unwieldy.
I don't, I don't. But I think too, we have those other, we have the D-LAC, ELAC, PTO. We have all these other groups. If there's some way also to use them, would be highly valuable. We know whether or not from a call to, you know, call to the author, if you will, you know, through those nominations from teachers or just making that call, then that's our plan B. You know what I mean? I just think there's ways that we can address it if it's kind of open.
Yeah, I think the goal, the goal is to, is to have stakeholder involvement. And the goal is to ensure that there's, I'm hearing, some level of board endorsement of this process. And also, in addition to that, it's to be not just efficient with the process, but also effective with our process and the way that we follow the, in following the state, the state guidelines as relates to that, those that exist in that regard. So, and we have a, this was presented to you as a draft for the purposes of having this discussion today. And we will take all your feedback back. There's been several great comments that you've shared with us tonight. And we'll make sure that we incorporate, you know, the common themes into the process and the process that we have moving forward with the getting the LCAP plan produced and the budget produced.
I have two more great comments. One, as far as a number is concerned, I don't think we should stick ourselves to a number of people that is our goal, but more so having each group represented, I think should be our goal. Each group that we think is going to be, that needs to be represented in this conversation should be our goal as far as, if that's 10 groups and there are goals, 10 people or what have you. As far as like a board endorsement, what have you, I don't feel that it's that important. And I think time is really an issue. And that if we have a very limited number of meetings left and we want to get this off the ground as soon as possible, then I'm okay with trusting the staff to make those decisions.
I think it's our intent to come back to the board at every board meeting, give an update with regard to LCAP, similar to the ECCL updates that the board receives so that you're well informed of where we're at in this process. I think history has shown that parent participation has been lacking in some areas. And we need to beat the bushes to get as many staff as we can. I've had very large BAC groups, up to 25, 30 people around large tables. And it's much easier, I think, with large groups because everybody's informed and you don't have people coming out of the woodwork as much when you have a larger, more informed community. That's just been my experience. And I would like to have as large a group as possible and sustain that, you know, for as long as we can so we have as many of our community members informed about the process as we go through this for the first time.
That makes sense. Quick, just one quick question. How robust is our school site, um, school site council in both, at both sites? So we got to work on that?